We'll start off, we'll ask the Vice Chair to open us up with prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we come this morning thanking you for your blessings, goodness, and grace in allowing us to come out to conduct business of the county today. Lord, we thank you for the blessings upon this county, this state, and our nation. Blessing our Lord the proceedings as we go forth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance with the life of the United States of America unto the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order now. First on there, we have the approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, we have a few changes we need to make. Under the call A B, we're going to add a recognition under the approval of the minutes. Under approval of the minutes, we've got a recognition we're going to take care of. Under department reports, Toby's going to handle the finance officers' budget amendments. Under where Morgan Jethro, our planning director, can be, we're going to move C down to old business at the end of the old business. And then we're going to add Jeff Mark from the DSS will be C. Under old business, we're going to add a B, which will be Gus Simmons. She wants to talk about the Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plan. And also, we're going to add a C, the Vice Chair, Jordan, will be talking about some zoning ordinances. And then we'll have a D, where we'll move Morgan to with the planning director on that area she's got. Under new business, we're going to move Ms. Anna Sou- what's his name? Susie? We're going to move her up underneath the recognition so she can go ahead and get out and won't have to stay here. And that'll be all the changes we need to make.
On closed session, I can't remember whether it's three or four. What is six? It's six.
Personnel.
All right, three, it's either two, three, and four. Three and four, I believe, is economic developed.
Three and four?
Yes.
All right, we'll add three and four to the closed session. All right. If no other changes, we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to have the approval of the minutes. Gentlemen, if you had your minutes, are there any corrections or adjustments that need to be made?
On page 1111, we're one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph. Commissioner Horr made a motion to use the 10-year option to refinance the USDA loan that would yield an additional $208,000 savings for a total savings of $887,000 for the 10-year options versus a savings of $679,000 for the 15-year option. And then the rest of it is the same. Yes.
All right, any other changes?
There was a couple of editorials tonight. Probably should have gotten with you earlier. On the first page, I might want to add, under citizens' comment, the third sentence being, I N G O, be used, being.
Oh, yeah.
All right, look under citizens' comments, the first paragraph, the third sentence says, these services are not be used. Should be being.
Oh, okay.
Also, on page 111, I believe that's Officer Brandon Hall. Is that right? The last, under the reclassification of the Sheriff Department, we had...
Should be an R.
Should be an R, yeah. Okay.
B R A N D O N?
Right.
That's what I've got. Oh, it's not R in it?
There should be an R.
I've got R, no.
Really?
Yes. Okay, okay.
On page 1115, second paragraph, Earl Rantry's Sunbury stated the board needs to know exactly what has to be done to put an item on.
All right, anything else, gentlemen? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment, I mean, the most, the minutes as amended. So moved. Of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, the next thing on the agenda, we've got a recognition. Ed Webb, would you come, Sheriff, come here, please? The sheriff was recently recognized. There was only three sheriffs in the, local sheriffs in the State Association, Sheriff's Association, that were recognized for their service to the state. And our sheriff, Sheriff Webb, was one of them. And we have a plaque here that would like to recognize him.
Sheriff, the state recognized you, the association recognized you for your service. And we're proud to have you as our sheriff and serve the state and county.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I was taking it back to back by this when you got it. And Sheriff, Sheriff Bond, Sheriff Tilden, we're three who are recognized as part of the state for our service. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
All right, next on the agenda, Ms. Anya Susie? I've got to have a clue on the bird. Gentlemen, we've got a proclamation for Hunger Action Month. The proclamation states, whereas Feeding America is a nation's leading domestic hunger relief organization with a mission to feed and advocate for American hunger through the nationwide network of member food banks. And whereas the Food Bank of Albemarle is a member of the Feeding America and fights hunger and poverty in 15 Northeast North Carolina counties by pondering with more than 130 local agencies to distribute food to the hungry. And whereas both the Food Bank and the Albemarle, Feeding America, seek to engage our citizens locally, statewide, and nationally in fighting to end hunger. And whereas the number of people in America in the Albemarle area who need assistance in increasing and reflected in more households in poverty and more individuals being unemployed. And whereas the fight against hunger is a fight that concerns each of us. And whereas the contribution of our time, talent, and treasures move us ever forward to the answers to issues of hunger and poverty in our communities. And whereas the citizens of Gates County can visit the Food Bank of Albemarle website for ideas of ways to make differences for local emergency feeding programs for the Food Bank, especially for our hungry and needy during these 30-day opportunities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Graham Twine, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Gates County, do hereby proclaim September 2012 as Hunger Action Month in Gates County. This will be adopted today, August 2012. Do I have a motion that we approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Of a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Mr., we'll present this wire.
Would you like to make a statement?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Step up to the podium.
Let me take a moment of your time. I just kind of wanted to highlight what we've done in Gates County over the last fiscal year and also kind of what the situation in Gates County is as far as hunger is concerned. According to the Map the Meal Gap study, which was conducted by Feeding America last year, in Gates County, 18.7% of residents are considered food insecure, which simply means that they do not have consistent access to nutritious food needed for a healthy lifestyle. 25% of children are also considered food insecure. During the last fiscal year, we served 5,232 households in Gates County, 13,035 individuals, and nearly 26% of those that we served were children. We do this through four partner agencies here in Gates County. We have Ballard's Grove Baptist Church, Damascus Road Worship Center, Gates Emergency Ministries, and Upper Room Assembly. And they're kind of on the ground distributing emergency food here in Gates County. And we also have a mobile food pantry. So, thank you so, so much, the commissioners, for the proclamation of partnering with us, and thank you for your time.
We thank you for what y'all do for the citizens of Gates County and the Albemarle.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we'll have our citizens' comments segment. First on here, we'll have Mr. Thomas Hill. Welcome, Thomas.
Good morning, how you doing? Ladies and gentlemen, county manager, county commissioners, in recent days, I've been taking a look at the voting, how you gentlemen voted, and how the rest of the nation is voting, and see where we're going with the money. Last month, Stockton, California, just voted to file bankruptcy. And I challenge you all to double-check that. The national debt is reaching $16 trillion. This is much higher than any time in our period of history. You gentlemen, last month was presented a banking for a 15-year loan compared to a 10-year loan. You gentlemen had the opportunity to save this county, according to John Horr, well over 200,000, I want to say, per year. You guys went with a 15-year loan instead of going for a 10-year loan. This is just not good business. We have 3 mil in the account. We have approximately 7 mil in debt. The time to pay the debt is when you have the money, gentlemen, not when you're flat broke. The residents of Gates County, with a bipartisan effort, is displeased with this voting. I would certainly ask that you gentlemen would reconsider your voting and ask that you save the taxpayers' money. Remember, this is not your money, gentlemen. However, I am pleased to hear about the residents being able to vote for the old courthouse. I'm very pleased to see that, and I hope that would follow through. But gentlemen, we're not happy. You could have saved us lots of money. And it was a four-to-one vote. I was here, I witnessed it for myself. Not very pleasing. Mr. Horr, for you, sir, when, if elected, I look forward to making you head of the table, and I look forward to voting on your bills. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, next one to Mr. Anthony Felton.
Hey, how you doing, Dave?
Hey, how you doing, Anthony? Welcome.
First thing is, I appreciate you going over my public comments while I was out. Next thing is, the little girl that's in the hospital now due to the Witten situation, I was wondering if there was some type of way that we can do like a fundraiser activity to help her out, you know, for the near future and all?
I'm sure that somebody over there is going to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Next on the agenda, Earl? Where you at? Oh, there you are.
You see Cal moved down here, got two seats further. I didn't bring McCain, but he is a smart person. I come close to McCal.
You did.
I clear I did. I'm going to try to run through this because I know y'all got a lot to do today, but I wanted to straighten out a couple of, two or three things. But one of the greatest sayings anybody ever said about me and the county was said by a county employee that ran the cahoon. And I've said this thing here before. They said, the woman in the county manager's office said, the ran, said, ran, said Earl Rantry is really a nice fellow. That's unusual, Johnny. But says, he's one man you don't want to cross. And I guess that over the last couple of, three years, it's been very difficult for me, I might get my ideas across. And I think that, just sit down and think about the fact that those of you that may have not wanted to listen to me, had some major problem with me, probably need to look back. Because the only weapon that we have, I have, is fear. As the great General Patton said, says, I want my men to lose the fear of the enemy, but I hope to God you never lose the fear of me. And I hate to be that way, but just a quick example in the first minute was, and Kenny is the only one that understands, was the intersections on the highway. And I got stabbed in the back on that thing, and some of the people that stabbed me probably won't stab me no more. But that's not the reason I'm here. Jack, I want to straighten out, this is number one reason. And because I didn't come prepared to make a statement at the last meeting, and when you said that most of the people in favor of saving the courthouse, and I told you, I said, yeah, and you said 80% of the people said that were in favor of the library. Well, Jack and I talked about this, I think, down when he had his office down here. And what Jack said, and this is what I want to make perfectly clear and be on the record, what Jack said was absolutely true. 80% of the people were in favor. I did a, I went and took the voter registration list, voted in that primary, at Jack's primary. And I went through and took out names randomly. I found a spiral notebook the other day where I'd written down the names and looked up phone numbers. I said, Earl's going to do his own survey, and let's see how Jack comes out. Well, Jack come out real good. Matter of fact, I believe Jack was over 80%. When you said, you want a new library, you think Gates County needs a new library. And everybody was in favor of that. And I blocked my telephone number, so if they didn't know my voice, Jack, they didn't know who it was. I blocked it every time. But I said, okay, how will you want, how do you expect to pay for this library? And most of the people thought, well, we're going to get a grant. And when I said, no, it's your tax money. And that is when the whole thing switched. So you've got to be very careful. And that goes back to the statement that I wanted to make for the record and for the public. And it goes to the old courthouse. And I will try to speed this up, Graham. But real quickly, I want to go back to the old Sunbury school. Y'all weren't even involved with that. No way, didn't, younger, all y'all were younger. But when they closed the school down, Sherwood Easton had a meeting out there in Oratorum. Schools all worked fine. Everything worked. Oratorum was clean. Citizens showed up. And a committee, Henry, was appointed, about 15 people. And what the county did not do, and I was told that I believe this, I got one of the people in the county government that I trust opinion of greatly, I think they were probably right. The county did not want to spend any money on it. They either wanted to do something with it, but they would not spend any money on it. Kenny, you in the school system at the time, looking after the school buses, I think.
Right.
And so, what I want to say is that, speaking on the old courthouse, I'm not going to say a whole lot until January, because we got to see how things come out. But we need what I would call a line item in the general funds, Jack, to assure us, me and some other people, those people you were talking about wanting to save the courthouse, that we do not sit back and purposely not protect the courthouse. That doesn't mean we have to spend millions of dollars to do anything. But it does mean that we're going to have to keep some heat in there in the winter. It doesn't have to be hot. It needs some air conditioning in the summer. That doesn't mean it's got to be cold. If the roof develops a leak, let's fix it. Let's don't sit down and let the thing rot down while we're sitting around here two or three years, Henry, arguing about what we're going to do with it. So my only thing to this group of the commissioners, and then I will bring it back up to the new group of commissioners, is that we keep the old courthouse stable. That make sense, Kenny?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. All right, next on the agenda, Reba.
Good morning. Just want to remind you all that we are preparing for your lunch, and your verbiage will determine whether it'll be cold or hot.
Okay, thank you, Reba. We'll get there when we can get there. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Robinson. Oh, there he is. Hey, Thomas, how you doing, little buddy?
Doing good. I'm here because I'm part of 4H, in that I've been doing different things in 4H about citizenship focus, and how I need to be in different meetings about our Gates County commissioners, and learning different information to going to different places like Washington DC. And I learned different things, you know, just to bring down to our county. So that's basically why I'm here, you know, citizenship focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Where are you from, Tom? I mean, what's your address? What town, what town do you live in? Gatesville? Just for the record.
Thomas, that was Robinson. Okay, thank you, Thomas.
Next on the agenda is Shirley Grimes, is that right? There she is. Hello there, welcome.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm good. How are you all?
All right.
I'd just like to thank the commissioners for letting me to represent Gates County as a senior town here, a legislative delegate in Raleigh. And we were there in June, and I have some handout on what we did. I am on the Long Term Healthcare Committee. And we did 14 priorities that we're going to present to the North Carolina Legislature for 2013. And that's what we've been working on. And I enjoy being your delegate, and I do appreciate what you all have done. And we work hard when we're there. We're losing one of our good supporter, which is Governor Beverly Purdue. But she will still help us, but not in the financial part that she can. And Dennis Streak is always a good member of this legislation. So we will be going back in October if you all so desire. And I just have some handout for you on what we did. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. We appreciate what you do for us. All right, next on the list is Ms. Ann Howell. Okay. Remind me if I forget. I'm going to write it down here. Okay, next, Wayne Britton. Butler, I'm sorry, Wayne Butler.
Good morning. How y'all doing?
Hello, Mr. Butler. How are you today?
I have been out in the county for 20 years, and I'm trying to move back in. And I'm having a problem with water. I have two water meters already on the property. I put one for my mama and one for me before I moved out. My daughter is on one, and my brother's on the other. But the meter that he took belongs to the property that I'm going back on. And I was going to run a water meter. I've been trying to do this for a year. I was going to run a water meter down, it's our property, it's Ad Lane. And my brother went and had three acres run off without any permission from anybody. I'm paying the taxes. And I have talked to a judge. I talked to a real estate lawyer. And they told me to come here. If y'all didn't do nothing, I would have to go hire you. But I would like for y'all to waive the rights for me to get a meter down there, waive the fee for me to get a meter, since I already have done put two down. And give me permission to run a water line on my own land.
Okay, let's get, can, leave your name and number so we can talk. We need to talk with Timmy on this issue. And then we'll set up a meeting with you and Timmy and the county manager, and then we'll have some more idea what's going, exactly going on.
The house number don't work, and the sales number. So I'm going to move back over to
We'll talk with... We'll talk with Timmy, and we'll set up a meeting with you and him and the county manager and one of us, and we'll see what we can do, and what the actual situation is, so we'll know.
But they said they don't see how that anybody could run lots off without permission from the rest of the A's.
Well, that would be a legal issue. But we'll look at the water, we'll look at the water side of it, and then we'll meet with you, and we'll know more about it. Okay?
Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler.
Mr. Butler, what area do you live in?
Gates. What is, what's the address?
Rooks Road.
What's the address?
Huh? What's the address?
What's the address?
One, what, 815?
815 Rooks Road.
Uh-huh.
Okay, we'll get some information together, and then we'll know more about what we're dealing with.
Diane will call, she'll call you either today or tomorrow and set up a time for us to meet.
All right, I sure appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. We appreciate you coming.
Is that, is that how the property is listed?
Mr. Butler, is that listed in your name, or?
I think it's in John L. Butler, my granddaddy's name.
Okay, all right.
It's Ad Lane.
She'll gather up the information that we need and then she'll sub it to me, will you?
Okay.
Okay? All right, next, Mr. Sidney Pierce. Sidney?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Sidney.
Yeah, of course, my name is Sidney Pierce, the third Republican candidate for the Hazel District. You know, I am a fiscal conservative. I do not like a large amount of debt, whether that be personal debt or debt owned by the government. Last fiscal year, I believe the county owned around $6 million in debt. And I believe this year, we're on task to become like $7 million in debt, if I'm right.
They're about.
All right.
All right. Well, that's a lot of debt, in my personal opinion. And I believe the county should take every available opportunity to reduce its debt. Again, that's just my personal opinion, but I'm also running on that, as candidate for county commissioner. Also, one thing I'd like to mention is the fact that, looking at this current budget, servicing the debt is going to cost the county around $1.5 million. And when you look at the other categories and other departments on the budget, you realize that it's actually the second largest expenditure item on the budget. And the only item that's larger is the item for the public school system at $2.69 million. I think that should be a perfect indication of just how large our debt is, and that it does need to be reduced. I just want to bring this issue forward, and just to let the public know about it, that we do have a tremendous amount of debt that needs to be reduced. I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Sidney. Next on the list is Mr. Terry Green. Welcome, Terry. How are you doing?
How y'all doing?
Good morning.
Got a quick and simple question. As y'all passed through U.R., if you noticed, over probably last year, they've moved the 55 mile an hour speed limit into U.R. Used to be around the canal, White Oak Road, and for some oddball reason, they've moved it back. And I come this morning to see if y'all could help me, or point me in the right direction to get the speed limit sign moved back to around the White Oak Road. The traffic, since they've noticed that, they've coming around my house or railroad, or railroad crossing there, and they're knocking along 55, 60 miles an hour. Had a few incidents through the school year with 18-wheelers. Some of them, they've all worked out, but some of them's been a little hair-raising. And like I say, I'd just like to get that sign moved back, if y'all can help me, or like I say, point me in the right direction to get that sign moved, and possibly a bus stop sign or child plane sign there. That's all I got. and possibly a bus stop sign, or a child plane sign there, um, that's all I got.
Terry, I, I talked to them last year about that, and we sent a letter to them, and their response was they saw no hazard there. We'll, well, I'll do, I've got the name of the person that we need to talk to, and I'll give it, you, maybe you call them, we'll back you up on that.
Okay. Somebody actually said they saw no hazard?
They actually saw no hazard there, there was plenty of room there for them to come in. We're trying to get it moved back to the, um, White Oak Road area. And they weren't interested in making any changes, because there was no, no, no reason for them to do it, they said. There hadn't been no wrecks there. I reckon you have to have two or three people killed before you can do anything like that.
Same thing with the Barfield Road and the incident out at Dave's Place. I mean, look what you had to do to get a sign there.
Uh, we'll, I'll, I'll get with you, we'll bring you the name.
Yeah, I need to get that number, 'cause that, uh, it's not too acceptable.
I don't know if, I don't know, but with a letter or two from y'all in the neighborhood, it may help. And we'll support it. I will, anyway, I don't bother resting my, I won't speak for them, but I will support it. Uh, next, Cal. That's more books for us? You all right? You always bring gifts.
Uh, our latest, uh, Front Porch Magazine is out again, so I just wanted to follow tradition and make sure y'all got some of the first copies. I have a whole box up here for the public. Y'all, excuse me, welcome to them. Uh, this one features, uh, East Carolina football, instead of NC State, but, um, I know. Just wanted to...
They got some of them now?
No, we have one of our local young men from Oaxqui, who's now on the staff at ECU, so we featured him. We also featured, uh, the Gates County feature in here, there's also a, the first time we ran a photo contest. Uh, we got very good response from it, and we got together and chose the top seven winners. Three of them get cash prizes, but the top seven, of the top seven, four are from Gates County, including first and third place.
Wow.
So, um, that was very good response.
I didn't win though.
No, you didn't. Anyway, I just wanna give these to, to the board, and again, to the public, y'all are welcome to magazines, I have them in a box.
If I had one, I'd be surprised, being that I didn't submit one.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Cal. All right, that'll end our first session on comments. All right, uh, next on the agenda, we'll go to department reports. Toby, you've got a couple from the finance office?
I do, Sandy's not here today, so she's asked me to fill in. We're gonna do budget amendments eight, nine, and ten, but eight and ten are tied to other items on the agenda, so I'd like to just do nine now. And Jeff is here, it's actually a DSS reappropriation to move some more money into their attorney and professional services line item, I believe. There's no new money, it's just a reallocation of their current money.
Oh, that's the reason I had to dial it. Okay. You talking about number nine?
Yeah, I only wanna do nine now, and eight and ten are tied to other items on the agenda.
All right, gentlemen, you got any questions about this, uh, reallocation for the DSS? Jeff, you, anything you want to say about it?
Um, I would just say that, like, even though I don't want to say that, that we're not asking for, um, any new money, that money is already in the budget, it's been budgeted for this year. Um, a lot of that money is coming from lapse salary money, and other money that will be paid for benefits due to waiting on a position from this, um, Office of State Personnel to approve, before we can post. So, once again, um, you know, this isn't any new money, it is money that is already in the budget, we just want to reallocate it to another line item, so we'll have money to put in the attorney's contract in the event, um, that we need legal services for children who are abused and neglected or dependent, and it has to go through the legal process for that, to represent them.
Gentlemen, you got any questions, Jill? All right, we have a motion to approve the amendment as, as presented. Motion second, all in favor of the aye? All opposed, like aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item we should have is the budget ordinance for the scattered site housing project. We are in the cycle of getting our four hundred thousand dollars from CDBG to replace three houses and repair a fourth house. This is the project ordinance to put the money officially in order.
Okay, we'll have to have a public hearing to...
I'm looking at a public hearing on this one.
Oh, you talking, what are you talking about, the budget?
Yeah, do your public hearing for the LGC and the other...
Do we need to act on this budget?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, all right, we need the, uh, to act on this, uh, budget for the scattered site housing project. Henry, you got anything on this?
Well, this is, uh, this is the ordinance that we're adopting, is what we're adopting now. Normally, if you adopt the ordinance, we would need a public hearing, so...
You don't need, you don't need a public hearing for project orders?
Oh, for project order, okay. No, this is the, the funds, the four hundred thousand dollars that we normally receive to, uh, replace up to four homes in the county, and, uh, it's a good project. It's one that's been very beneficial to many of the citizens of the county, and I, I would encourage the board to, uh, adopt this, and I would make a motion that we adopt the project ordinance for the scattered site housing project for two thousand eleven and twelve.
All right, we've got a motion to adopt the project ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Our motion is second, all in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
The next item I have will require a public hearing. There are two resolutions in your packet. One is required by the Local Government Commission for the refinancing of the DSS building, and the second is a very similar resolution that's required by BBNT to approve the financing that you agreed to at the last meeting.
Okay, we need to open a public hearing, do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All right, we're now in public hearing to discuss the resolution approving the financing terms for the refinancing of the DSS building, and also another resolution which BBNT requires for that same rein, uh...
Refinancing?
Refinancing. Are there any public comments on this?
I come up here quick, 'cause I'm gonna leave as soon as this is, as soon as Cal gives me my magazine to read when I get home.
You're moving a lot fast, and you did it two weeks ago, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I sure, I tell you, it was nice getting rid of that cane, too. Um, I don't have no real comment on that, but it's a good time to bring it up. And we, we know, the public knows, you know, we're not, there's a lot of disagreements among the Commissioners, but that's the kind of the way it's posed at the, some great guy said that everybody thought the same way, we need one man, Henry could come over here and do it, and then go preach. Um, I don't have any problem with disagreement. I do maybe have some problems sometimes when people shut you out, simply because of their ego or their pride. But I can honestly say to the public, and to the county, that the county does owe Johnny Hoar, uh, some thanks, a lot of thanks, on this refinancing thing, because it had not been bought up. Now, if I say anything wrong, uh, if it was being done, and I didn't know about it, certainly correct me. But the first I ever heard anybody saying anything about it, Jack was Johnny. And I'm not into the finance mortgage stuff, I don't own a mortgage. So I had nothing to refinance. The only thing is, I know is that thirty-year traders don't pay much money. And so, we owe a round of thanks, and I think all of you should recognize the fact that Johnny did a lot of work on this. Also, and I'm sorry she's not here, but I want to thank Sandy for listening to this, and going ahead and acting on it, 'cause that was important, too. Because so many times, in the past year or so, we get into, uh, the mud and can't walk, uh, over simple things. And Johnny done research and brought this up, and Sandy got it done, and I think both of them should be thanked for doing it.
Thank you, Earl.
Thank you, Earl.
Get my magazine, let me truthfully...
All right, any other comments? If thought, we'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolutions as presented?
I just got a couple of comments here, and which I know, they're both are correct, but, uh, I don't know when the one that says the one million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, 'cause that is a correct number as of the date. But the way I understand it is, the plan is that we will make the last payment in September to USDA. When we make that payment, then the balance will be like one million seven ten. Now, on a financing agreement, we do have the one million seven, so I'm not sure how these, and I don't know if it's a timing mechanism or what, and what is, what is really is our plan, uh, to do this. In other words, the payoff amount, to me, the two ought to be the same. And it is a timing mechanism here, and so I don't know, and I don't know if it's even material or not, but I just wanna make one hundred percent sure that we don't go out and borrow any more money than the current payoff of that debt, which would be, I believe it's one million seven hundred and nine thousand dollars, if we make the payment to the USDA. And that's the only, only thing I wanna make that one hundred percent sure, that that does not happen. We don't need to be borrowing any money above what the payoff amount is on the debt. And that, and how, whether that's correct in the way it's written here, I, I don't know. And I, I guess, uh, the resolution wanted one million seven five oh, are both of these going to the, uh, LGC?
You may ask that? No, as I said when I began, one is for the LGC, and one is for BBNT.
So BB, and, so the LGC is gonna just see the one million seven fifty?
Well, they're gonna see what says approximately one million seven fifty, which is why you can't put in an exact number, because you don't know exactly which day you're gonna pay it off. That's why the word approximately is there.
So what day do we intend on paying it off?
Well, the day after we get LGC approval, and then we sign the closing paperwork with BBNT.
So, so in other words, if we, um, do the BBT, BBNT, and we do it today, and we borrow one million seven hundred thousand dollars, that we're gonna pay that the very next day against the LGC, I mean, the USDA?
Yes, it'll be simultaneously...
Whatever the timeframe is to do it.
Right.
Okay. As long as we're borrowing only one point seven million dollars.
However, you wouldn't do it today, because you don't have LGC approval.
We're, we're borrowing enough to pay, pay the debt off.
Okay.
And that's what the, that's what the resolution is approximate, because we don't have a total number until the date that it's approved by the LGC.
And that's fine, as long as the two agree.
All right, do we have a motion to accept resolutions as presented?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
That's all I have this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next one here, Renee, our tax.
Good morning, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Renee.
You have your tax collector's report, and I know it's kind of a crunch time with yesterday being the end of the month, so you probably haven't had much time to review it. Nothing really out of the ordinary to report. You will notice that with this, the start of this fiscal year, we have moved the two thousand eleven taxes down with the delinquent tax, and we're now in the current year for two thousand and twelve. And you'll also notice that your total collected in year-to-date collection for this month is the same, strictly because we've only had one month in this fiscal year. Are there any questions in regards to this? Or if you do, like I say, I know you haven't had time to review it, once you do, if you have any questions, if you'll just email myself or Gwen, and we'll be glad to answer those for you. I also wanted to let you know this month, we will be getting our annual tax bills out. We have just recently gotten back our test print from our printers, and they look good. We're real excited about sending out the new bills on the eight and a half by eleven paper, and I think the taxpayers will like receiving their bills that way versus the way they have been.
I got one question for you, just come to me in the last few days about the water bills. Is it possible to do the same thing, so that the water bills would be on the same type print than what they are now? Is that, is that, is that, would that be, is, no, it's, it's the, uh, no, it wasn't the water bills, it was the, uh, car tax, the taxes for vehicle taxes?
We could, but we have chosen...
That's gonna be into...
We have chosen not to do that at this point, because of cost, and also, next year, July two thousand and thirteen, it will be coming through DMV.
Yeah, well, that's what I told them, that the state was planning on taking over in the next year.
So we, we've chosen not to do the motor vehicles at this point.
I think they dropped them in the, in the ditch a couple times, taking them out of the mailboxes.
Well, it's kind of, and they are easily lost, and, you know, there's a lot of information on that open court, too. But like I say, because of the change that's gonna be made in a few months, we opted not to go this route with them.
I said I would say something, I said it. Thanks, Renee.
Um, also to let you know, we will be turning accounts over to Zikeas Legal Services this month. We will probably be turning over around fifty to seventy-five right now, and then we'll probably have another group that will be turning over in October. We have had quite a number of people to come in to set up payment plans on the schedule that y'all had adopted some time back, and of course, we'll be reviewing those to see how they have kept up with that payment schedule, and as to whether they'll be turned over to later date to Zikeas, but we're looking forward to working with them on our foreclosures.
Right now, Renee, if one of those people were to call the office, are you referring them to Zikeas?
No, Zikeas will not be dealing with the taxpayer at all, because from a legal standpoint, they represent us, not the taxpayer, so our office will be dealing with the taxpayer. We will be collecting all the funds and whatnot, so that, um, those conversations will be had strictly with us. Any other questions? Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, Renee. All right, next on the agenda, Jeff, uh, from the DSS.
Thank you for having me, gentlemen. Um, I'm actually coming today on behalf of the Gates County Housing Committee as well. Diane's given you a packet and assistance policy. Our committee has been awarded an urgent repair grant through the North Carolina Housing Finance Committee for the two thousand and twelve cycle. What this grant is, is, is the funds are to assist very low and low-income households with special needs and addressing housing conditions which pose imminent threat to life and/or safety, or provide accessibility modifications and other repairs necessary to prevent displacement of very low and low-income homeowners with special needs such as frail and elderly persons with disabilities. What we're trying to do here with this grant is to serve twelve, is to serve at a minimum of twelve households. The grant is for seventy-five thousand dollars, um, the Housing Committee will be soliciting funds. Private donations that you see in there, that four thousand dollars number of local funds that we will be, begin soliciting very soon. Some other highlights, if you may have questions with eligibility, the resident must reside in Gates County, must own or have ownership rights, and occupy the home in need of repair. They must have a special need, and that's defined in this assistance policy. Um, they must have urgent repair needs. There is income limits that will be used to determine whether they meet those limits when they make their application. That is also listed, um, the documents listed for what is needed to verify those income limits in this assistance policy. We did, um, and, there is included in there, in this policy, a selection of applicants, which explains to you the selection process, it'll be on a points-based system with this grant. At least, at minimum, fifty percent of the house, of the households served have to be below, at or below thirty percent of the state median income limits, which is listed on the front page. So more points are listed, or given to those who meet those lower income limits than under fifty percent income limits. There's also the other points as for ranking there, which you'll see, which those more points are given for the priority of need and the population that we're trying to serve. Any other questions that you may have, um, if you look on page three, the steps of the process begin there. We're just outlining in detail for those who, um, for anyone who applies for the grant, we will be looking at posting assistance policy on the county website, and also with the application, once this policy is approved and all the other remaining documents are sent in with the post-approval documentation to the North Carolina Housing Finance Associate Agency in Florida. And once that is approved, we will begin soliciting applications and start screening the applicants to become, to be, to see if they're eligible and to receive funds from this grant that's been given to the county.
So basically, this, this grant is coming to the county and will be administered through the housing committee, is that what you're saying?
The housing committee will be a subsidiary of the county. Actually, on the application, the minister is Toby. The county will handle the finance portions of that, also with inspections. The inspections department will come out and do final inspections. You know, the housing committee is going to be working with the inspections department, as you'll see in here, and approve contractor registries, which I've already been talking with Christopher Couch about, to ensure that the people that are doing work on the home, they do good work, they do timely work, they stay within their budget. So that's kind of how the housing committee is going to work hand-in-hand with the county in administering this grant.
There's a contract with the housing committee.
Right.
I know we had a, we had a contract with them.
The county has a contract with the housing committee. The housing committee did not have its 501(c)(3) status at the time of submission for this grant, so we went through the county. The grant requires that the county have, or grantee, whoever it is, to have an assistance policy in place. And this is the assistance policy that we've adopted. It's basically a template of what the housing grantor requires, and it has to be signed by the Board of Commissioners. It just says that, you know, we had an agreement that this assistance policy is what we'll go by as a county when we consider applicants for assistance. I think we're very fortunate to have received this grant, this $75,000 grant. We can spend up to $5,400 on each home. $5,400 can replace a roof. It can do some very needed repairs to our senior citizens and those that are in need on an emergency basis. But like everything else, you know, when you get a grant, you've got a lot of paperwork to deal with, and this is what we have now. So I would encourage the board to adopt this assistance policy so that we can move forward and get our post-approval document in place so the money can start being drawn down.
And Mr. Jordan, if I can tell the board one more thing, this document has actually been sent preliminary, sent in a preliminary manner to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and our team leaders looked over it, and it does have their preliminary approval pending your approval.
Yeah. Any other questions, gentlemen? Do we have a motion to accept this assistance policy as presented?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, Jeff.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda was going to old business, the county manager.
I was on a different part of the agenda, I apologize. I thought Morgan was next.
They moved her.
All right. The next, the issue I have first will be Clearscapes, and then I'll get to Gus and kind of tie those two, tie Gus into some other things he wants to talk about, some things we need to talk about. But at the last meeting, I believe the board decided that you wanted to move forward with Clearscapes into Phase One. You have in front of you the contract to do Phase One. As I told you guys in an email, I believe Friday, the AIA, which is the standard architectural document, 90% or more is not applicable to this. It's typically used for construction. So I've talked to Clearscapes, and they have agreed to simply remove the AIA and be governed by the letter that was attached to AIA, it's dated December 5th, 2011. I believe Commissioner Jordan has some issues he'd like to insert into it. But the AIA portion of what you have in front of you, you can discard for now, and then anything that needs to be added in can be added in. And if you want to talk about that first, then we can talk about the money part of it second.
Yeah, the board, I took a look at the AIA document, and I'm in agreement with the county manager that, as a whole, many of the requirements in the AIA document is for construction. But I do have a little concern that, you know, when we bring the architect in, they're going to be reviewing the building, they're going to be climbing and just working in that building to do the assessment. So there are some general liabilities that I think we ought to include in the letter. Article two, if you look at Article two on your AIA document.
On page two, page two, Article two.
Is it Article two, okay, I'm sorry, Article, yeah, Article 2.5. Article 2.5 talks about, "The architect shall maintain the following insurance for the duration of this agreement."
Sorry, sorry.
"If any of the requirements set forth below exceed the types and limits the architect normally maintains, the owner shall reimburse the architect for any additional cost." So it specifies the architect will maintain general liability, automobile liability, workman's compensation, and professional liability. Even though we're not going into construction, I feel these type things need to be in place. This is a boilerplate document, but while most of it is not applicable, these type things are, we want to make sure that, you know, they are in agreement and have these things in place. And I, I would, would recommend that in just using the letter, that they address Article 2.5 as a minimum. And, you know, if they want other things in there, then we could talk about it, but I, I would recommend that we add that in there. That would be mine.
Just, just for clarification's sake, you want the substantive matters of 2.5 inserted. Whether they word it differently is irrelevant, as long as it covers the substantive matter, is that what I'm understanding?
As long as it covers the fact that while they are on the county's property, that.
They maintain insurance.
They maintain insurance. You know, automobile liability and that sort of thing while, you know, they're in the county's contract or employ.
The problem.
And it's broken down here. And even professional liability, because that's, that's something that the county could be held liable for, you know, if, if that is not upheld.
I don't foresee that being a problem at all, and I'll, I'll make sure that the final contract that's approved includes the substantive matter of 2.5.
So generally, you have to have an insurance statement with the contract start with.
Certificate.
That it provides.
A certificate of insurance.
Certificate of insurance that we would require them to have, as a subcontract.
All right, any other insertions?
We don't need to act on this, then, too.
Well, I, I would recommend that you go ahead and act on it, provided that it includes the substantive matter of 2.5.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we authorize the county manager to enter this contract with Clearscapes architect with the noted additions that was discussed.
For Phase One.
For Phase One.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right.
All right, now to get to the stickier part of this issue, how do we pay for it? You should have in front of you Budget Amendment 10. And I apologize in advance, this is going to take me a minute to explain it to, to you, because it's a little more detailed than a normal budget amendment. But as you'll recollect, during the budget process, the commissioners approved $150,000 over what you were going to give to the schools in a whole harmless fashion. And we had, in essence, guaranteed the schools that they would receive 150,000 more than they received last year. Provided, we believed that the state was going to come forward with more money than they had in the past, and as long as they were held harmless, the schools were fine with it. Well, the states have come back, and they have brought to the table 138,000 of the 150,000 that we had held them harmless for. So we're only paying 12,000 out of that 150,000. So now there's 138,000 freed in our budget. Of that, Dr. Williams has met with, with me and has requested that we give them an additional 75,000 to deal with some capital projects that they have that they would like to address this year, which I think is an excellent idea. The budget amendment listed at 78,000, it actually should be 75,000, that's, that's a typo, which would change the top number from 131,985 to 128,985. This is relevant to Clearscapes in that the other parts of the additional money would pay for the first phase of Clearscapes, would make a correction into the register of deeds budget that's come up that needs to be addressed for $5,000 plus the FICA. And the balance would sit where it is until we get to Phase Two, which I believe we will get to in the spring of 2013, which is this current budget year. And that was kind of long, but are there any questions about that?
So basically, you, the money in the budget that was set at what size of school, going to 175,000?
Yes.
For their capital projects out of that money? And then, then fund this Clearscape project out of that budgeted money that was left over?
Correct, and then you would make the minor corrections to register of deeds, and then the, the balance would sit there until we got to Phase Two, which, from reading the timeline that I believe we're going to be on with the courthouse project, I believe you're going to see a Phase Two contract before the end of the budget year. This would pay for, not all of it, but would pay for a substantial portion of Phase Two.
I think we're very fortunate that the state appropriated money for the school, that we did not have to use 150,000 dollars. And to give the school an additional 75,000, I think that's a good thing to help the schools out with their capital outlay projects. It was something that we had not originally talked about, but we know our school system has various needs, and this is a, a good opportunity to show our support for them.
We, we had already put 100,000 in the capital.
We give, we give them 100,000 dollars every year, every budget I've seen.
Capital.
Yeah, for capital, I would say for many years, we've given them 100,000. This, these are issues that they've needed to deal with, and they just haven't dealt with due to, to financial decisions that they made, but they have an opportunity now to deal with it. And I, I think, I agree with the vice chairman that this is an excellent opportunity for us to, to work together in a new partnership that we have with the school board.
Toby, it's my understanding that this is not one 75,000 dollar capital project, but several.
That's, that's correct. I've seen the list of projects, and there are multiple, I would say there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 different projects that, that they would like to address. And to answer your question directly, no, they're not one project, they're multiple.
All right, we also, we're setting on 56,000 dollars in our USA, USDA reserve account that with the payment of this loan will be available. And that's cash that's been appropriated that becomes expendable, that would clearly cover the Clearscapes first portion. So we're not, we're going to make this payment in December, in September. We're not going to have another one until the following September, which is in another budget year. So there's an opportunity for that 56,000 dollars to be liquidated also against this appropriated.
Okay, are there any other questions about Budget 10 that I cannot, Budget Amendment 10 I can answer?
If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve Budget 10, Budget Amendment 10 as presented.
So move. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Just, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, you said as presented, actually as amended.
As amended.
If we could just be clear on that.
All right.
Okay, that'll take care of the first part of what I have on the agenda, which is Clearscapes.
Okay.
The second part I have, actually, is tied into Gus, and it would probably be better served if Gus starts, and then I'll, I'll chime in in the middle. He wants to talk to you about letting Phase Two, and we're also going to talk about the spray field and some modifications that we believe are relevant and prudent, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Gus, how you doing this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I'm well, I hope you are. And the other commissioners, I hope you're well as well. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you again. As your manager presented, I'm here this morning to talk to you about a couple of things. First thing I'd like to talk to you about is the letting of your wastewater treatment plant project. Congratulations, you recently received a permit from the state of North Carolina to build and subsequently operate the wastewater treatment plant that's been designed consistent with your economic development project. Now that you have that permit in hand, we're actually able to go to the bidding process and advertise that project for bid, receive bids from prospective contractors who wish to do that work. There are a couple of things that we need to do before you actually would, would put the bid out for advertisement. One is, as you've become well aware, we take the bidding documents we would like to send out, send those back to the funding agencies to make sure they get one final look, to make sure that everything is consistent with their expectation. So with your approval, we'd like to go ahead and do that and get their, their thumbs up on being able to use those documents. And then secondarily, we would like your approval to, as soon as we get that approval from the funding agencies, to go ahead and advertise that project for bid, so that we can begin the process of getting that wastewater treatment plant constructed. And then the, the last piece that's associated with that regards our contract. As you are familiar, we have contracted with you every step of the way throughout this process, rather than having one master contract that includes everything that we could foresee. So I would also ask that you entertain our proposed contract to assist you with the bidding and the construction administration process associated with the wastewater plant. So, Mr. Chapel, I'll pause there, see what comments, questions you have.
I don't have any, I'm with Gus.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you've got, we've got basically three things here we're dealing with.
Yes, sir.
Explain the first one one more time.
Okay, the first one is I would like your approval to transmit the bid documents for the wastewater treatment plant to the funding agencies involved in your, in your project to seek their approval, to let those documents go.
Any questions on this, on this part of this, that we need to deal with? Any questions?
Doing a good job so far.
All right, if not, we'll entertain a motion to, to allow Gus to transfer the documents to the funding agencies to start this process. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, that takes care of that part.
Yes, sir.
All right, now the second one.
Number, number two is we will likely get that approval prior to, within the next 30 days. So I'd like to go ahead and seek your approval to, once we get their sign-off on the use of those bid documents for us to go ahead and advertise that project, project for bid. We would anticipate on a, on a wastewater treatment plant project, we typically would like to advertise that for about 45 days. That gives ample time for lots of contractors to get a really good look at it, get their pricing in line and be prepared for a bid.
So you would expect to put it out for bid sometime between now and first of next month? Is that basically what you're saying?
Hopefully. It, it may trickle into next month just a little bit, but we'd certainly like to move on it before the, the start of the next month.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow Gus and his company to move forward with that process as well.
A question.
All right.
What's the range, estimated range you would think this would be in, Gus?
His range. For the construction of the, of the project. I apologize, I don't have the, the budget sheet in front of me. I would share with you, there have been no substantive changes based on the permitting process that would have changed our budget opinion. And actually, we've seen, it's actually a good time to bid this project, because we've seen a slight decrease in some of the major materials that are used in the development of a pre-manufactured wastewater treatment plant, which is what you'll be bidding. So again, there were no substantive changes that came through the permitting process that changed our budget. And I apologize for not having that, that number handy with me.
All right, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, that's part two, let's go to three now.
The third, Mr. Chairman, is again, we would, we enjoy the working relationship we have with Gates County. I appreciate the comment, Commissioner, that, that we've done a good job. We certainly aspire to do that for you. And in that, we'd like to continue to do a good job for you through the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. So we prepared for you a proposed contract for that phase of work. I would share with you that we have asked for an amount that is slightly less than what's in the budget to cover the construction administration of this project, and, and some of that is a result of some, some ease in the process of getting that permitted and working with the state. So we did not feel that you would need to expend all of those resources at this time, so.
That is very unusual for that to happen.
It's not over yet, Mr. Chairman. We, we may come back to you and say we need it back before it's all over with, but at this point in time, we, we feel good that we've got everything covered. So the amount for our services is actually not just in line with your budget, it's slightly less than the allocation in the budget.
Well, I'd like to say, working with you has been, it's been good. Well, I'd like to say, working with you has been, it's been good. You all have handled any problems that's come up with Deener very well and, and made sure everything was taken care of and managed like it should be done. The project looked like it's moving forward greatly. I think it's been a great job done out there. Moving pretty quick considering the bad weather we've had.
Yes, sir.
I think the hole was the worst part, but I think they're past that now, right?
Yes, sir. We are. So thank you very much.
All right. Any questions for Gus on this contract? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Gus.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have any questions about the project as it's going on right now? Y'all like asking why he's here?
All right. See a lot going on and I'm glad to see that we've extended the, the lines down to the, what is it, the Cotton Gin Road?
Yes, sir.
Right, and, so is that complete now as far as the lines being extended prior to being, you know, connected for use?
There are still some, some taps that have got to be installed and we have not completed the performance testing of the pipe. Commissioner, just to share with you very briefly in that process, once the contractor completes the installation work, we then go back and do some performance testing on the pipe to ensure that the, the connections are rigid and watertight and things of that nature. So we've still got a bit of that work to accomplish, but we, we're pleased the, actually your contractor has done a good job. They've been very communicative, which as you get folks know in construction, communication is the key. And they've been, been good to work with.
Will, will there be a lift station down at that end down there? Somewhere where that, they just be tapped in, the existing customers that are there? The school and the prison, will they be tapped into that?
Yes, sir, they'll be tapped in.
Okay, there won't be a lift station or anything there?
No, sir.
At that point, okay.
Mr. Chapel, you had introduced something about the existence-
Yeah, I was just making, I'll be ready to move on because I have a related but not-
That would be the budget amendment?
Yes. Budget amendment eight is the final budget amendment I have for you. We've been contacted by Deener and Gus, Timmy, myself and the Deener representative have met and discussed. Deener has encouraged us to move away from a combination grass tree sprayfield and pretty much encouraged us to go one way or the other. And they would recommend we go with the grass exclusively due to the ability to, to maintain it and, and have the sprayfield reach its maximum performance level. So, we met with them last month and they strongly encouraged that, that we take the trees out and go to a strict fescue field, which is what this budget amendment before you does. In the sewer budget, Timmy had requested and you had approved to buy him a tractor to do work out at the field. If we move away from the trees and go exclusively with a fescue field, he feels he can delay that purchase and we can parlay that money into the actual removal of the trees and grindin' the stumps down. He's gotten three quotes. This is the best quote that he has, is, is to remove the trees and to grind the stumps down to achieve maximum performance. And I'll turn the mechanics over to Gus, but that's the gist of it.
Yes, sir. And, and we would support that recommendation by the Department of Natu- of Environment Natural Resources. Certainly, the removal of the existing tree species that you have in the sprayfield will not only help facilitate ease of maintenance for the county, but it's also going to help the site dry out after a rain event. It's going to aid in elimination of some shading that's affecting some of the vegetation that's out there. So the net result is you'll have a healthier, more productive sprayfield. So we, we would certainly support that recommendation.
I was talking to one of the contractors that bid the job and he said it's like nine hundred trees that's got to be removed. Is that somewhere in the neighborhood?
I, I would estimate that's probably close.
He, he, he bid, he didn't get the job. He did bid, and he was telling me, I was asking questions about, he was a local, local contractor.
Yes, sir. There are some, it should be noted that the, some of the, the trees that are standing in the sprayfield are-
Already dead.
Are dead trees. And would, would present some hazard to some of the equipment that you've got in the event of a storm. So it should be noted that you've got several of those, if nine hundred's the correct number, you have several of those that would need to come out anyway. And so, once that were to, to be accomplished, you have a very sporadic placement of trees on the site, which again, doesn't result in, in consistency of the use of the sprayfield.
Gus, do you, do you recall what the high bid was?
No, sir. I wasn't involved in that bidding process.
Well, I'm sorry.
What was the high bid?
Uh, no, Timmy has them. He actually got three bids and he had them do it a la carte, where they gave us a price for removing and a price for stump grinding. And this is actually a mix and match. One, one of the companies will do the cutting out and one will do the stump grinding. I can get you the numbers, but it's three different companies and it was done a la carte.
And Commissioner, thanks for clarification. This was a staff project, not one that we were assisting you with as far as obtaining those bids.
Okay.
Just, just a little inquisition here, I guess. The trees that are going to be removed, do you think the contractor's going to use that, sell it for lumber?
No. No, I can, I can answer that already. No, he's going to cut them out, grind the stumps down, and then it will be up to our staff to, to dispose of them and they'll burn them. That's how they'll do it.
So we'll end up burning the trees once they're cut?
Mm-hmm. Which is what we've done at the sprayfield already. And if you go out there now, there's a couple piles where we've already burned.
None of those trees were considered potential-
We had some loggers look at it and honestly, just, it's kind of like Gus was saying, it's such sporadic nature of what's good and what's bad that it would, it wouldn't be cost effective to go in and get what is, what little bit is good that's in there.
All right, we've got a, a budget amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Gus.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda, the vice chair is going to talk about some zoning issues that come up with our last meeting. Yeah, we'd all like to take a quick break.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll take a break. The vice chair will be talking about some zoning issues and some changes that we would like to propose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, it's, it's come before the board several times in the past year and even in prior years, the request for waivers to have properties rezoned so that some of the citizens could consider putting a mobile home in a residential area. And each time that that request is made, we, we end up waiving a six hundred dollar fee, which covers assembling of an adjustment board, the board of adjustments and so forth. But I would like to propose to the board today that we should consider making a zoning ordinance change that would allow the use of mobile homes in residential areas under special use permit. One of the concerns that we've had in the past is that we don't want mobile homes to downgrade adjacent properties. Well, under the special use permit, that would be considered. And you know, it's not an arbitrary thing where you can just put one there, but at least if the neighborhood permits it, if the other properties are conducive to that, certainly would be a benefit to our citizens to allow that to happen. So I would ask the board, that we put before the planning board, to make the following changes to the zoning ordinance and provide recommendations to the board of commissioners so that we can proceed with a public hearing and implement the recommended changes during our September seventeenth, two thousand twelve night meeting. The change would read, read as follows. I revise the table of permitted uses in the zoning ordinance to allow mobile homes, single wide and class A double wide, double wides in R one zone districts by special use permit. And currently, if you look under the table of permitted uses, under R one, you are not allowed to have a mobile home at all. In order to have a mobile home in an R one district, you would have to go in and rezone that area of homes. But this way, you would be able to do that. You'd be able to put a mobile home there under special use permit. The second item, I would ask the board to support and, and requesting the planning board to revise the special use permit from the current five hundred dollars, and I have here, to one hundred dollars. Now, part of, part of my justification for recommending a hundred dollars is the fact that even in putting in a special use permit, there's somewhat risk to the citizens. If the board of adjustments decides that this request is not conducive to putting a mobile home there, then the homeowner is going to be out of five hundred dollars or a hundred dollars. And we have the fee there also to make sure that the county recoups some of its, its expenses for bringing in the board of adjustments to make that consideration. And it, and it would kind of balance the risk, if you will. In other words, the, the county would have somewhat of a risk in there because we would end up paying part of the board of adjustments salary for making that consideration. It has been suggested that we raise it some, but that is why I started with a hundred dollars and, and I'm open for discussion on that. But I would, that's the first part and I, I think we, Mr. Chairman, we might want to just take a look at this before we go into the second part.
Okay. I have, Henry and I talked about this several times since the last meeting. One of the issues that we were concerned about was allowing mobile homes, were the possibility of downgrading in the neighborhood. So that's one of the reasons that we come up with the idea to use a special use permit so that would be, it would be a check and balance for any, any, any use on it. But it would also be available for people. Another part of this is the fact that somebody's going to put a mobile home in an area and the cost wise, as far as the, the permit is the fact, once they, there will be a taxpayer and they will be paying taxes on the property no matter what's there. So it's considered a service. So we've got several services in the county that we don't charge for. One would be the DSS and the library service and all. It's a service to the citizens, not just trying to be a money-making process for the county. So that's one of the reasons I support what Henry's got here. And that's, that's why I think that this is a very good idea and I'd like to see us move forward on it. Any other comments?
I do concur with that. As I've stated many times, I, I think that we have been, we want to have nice neighborhoods and do that, but we have to be sensitive to those people that are less fortunate than we are. The main purpose is that most anything can be made to look nice. It, it's all about a person's character and what they, how they treat the property. With these special use permits, I would hope that adjacent landowners or those involved would be involved in the decision-making process to take and do something like this. But I concur and I really do think that we need to move forward on trying to improve some of our zoning ordinances and not so much to hinder people, but to encourage. And the same thing in anything, is encouraging investments and people to take opportunities and move forward and improve their lives. As many of people in Gates County that started off in mobile homes, many of them. And there are a lot of nice houses now on those places. Now, we don't want to have a monopoly of, conglomerated in one area and, and really a true park of whatever. At least I would prefer not to have that, but you have to be sensitive to all the people's needs and to realize that we do live in the country. We're not in the city. And there's a lot of things, if you ride across our county here that are unpleasant to your sight, but there's some of these things that can be pleasing. And then from the money standpoint, I agree a hundred percent. I don't think a person should be taking that kind of, and we, and we've got another issue that happened, and that's with our water impact fees. I've been working on that, just got that from Renee, all the taxpayers for the last, I mean, the water customers for the last two years and judging, looking and plotting their usages by customer. And it's, it would be, if I was one of those customers that was using only two thousand gallons or a thousand gallons a month and you charged me a thousand dollars as an impact fee, I would be truly upset. It's just, it doesn't, what impact? Now, if I'm a commercial guy that's using a lot of water, that may be one thing, but we, we really do need to address these issues and things that we have problems for our citizens to try to improve our community and our relationship with our citizens. And I'm, and one hundred percent supportive of this.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we request the planning board to revise the zoning ordinance that addresses the table of permitted uses to allow mobile homes, single wide and class A double wides in R one zone districts by special use permit. And that they would provide that back to us by our September seventeenth night meeting.
All right. We have, did you want to include the, the price for the fee or do you want them to-
And to revise the fee for special use permit from five hundred dollars to one hundred dollars.
Okay. We have a motion on, from the table. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right. I think, I think we've made a positive decision here, a very forward-moving decision. Even Blahout finds an ache on every now and then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I point out that it was a unanimous decision, sir?
Yes, sir. You want to do the second part, Henry?
Well, I can, I-
Yeah.
All right. The second part to this, we have some situations in the county that are obvious that zoning is incorrect. And we've had requests for rezoning on one of our commercial districts or commercial businesses. And there are other rezoning or zoning discrepancies in our zoning map. I propose that we implement a ninety-day moratorium on rezoning fees to allow the citizens of Gates County to request a change in their zoning designation. And during that ninety-day period, we would ask the planning board to look at those zoning change requests and see the feasibility of making that change and revise the zoning map to reflect those changes upon bringing it to the board of commissioners and getting the final approval. Once that's done, then we would re-implement or re-establish the fees for rezoning, which is currently at six hundred dollars. But we continually get one or two, or three a year, and I believe we need to go ahead and address this issue and just make sure that we've got our zoning audits the way that it should be, especially our zoning map, and, and we won't have to keep addressing these issues. So that would be the second proposal, and I'll repeat it again, that we implement a ninety-day moratorium on zoning, rezoning request fees. Allow the citizens of Gates County ninety days to request a change of zoning designation. And our planning board will review that zoning request and look, by looking at surrounding properties to see if it fits being able to be rezoned. And then we will approve what's been presented and move forward as we're currently established.
Gentlemen, you got any comments on that?
Yes, sir. It would certainly be something that I would think that we would run public notice in the newspaper, so. In, in doing such a thing, I would suggest that we maybe did it run in the paper twice before the ninety-day period began, to make sure the public's well aware of it. Wouldn't want those, the clock to be counting-
Okay.
-prior to them having full knowledge of it.
I concur with that.
Any other comments? I would also, when the process of this, is look at that, that six hundred dollar rezoning fee and, and let's reevaluate that and see what the cost is for rezoning. It's a little different than it is for special use permit. And it may be a residential price or a commercial price, I mean, we might look at and maybe get some normals in the process to make sure that fee is a- the process to make sure that fee is a comparable fee to what the counties, other counties charge for commercial and residential areas.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak one, I believe Morgan's gonna cover that during her presentation.
Okay.
I'm, I might add, one for the county manager as well. Uh, this was the last zoning request that was used back in, uh, two thousand three, two thousand four, and uh, in addition to running it in the newspaper, we could put something like this on the website as well, that they could fill out and, uh, and request a change.
Oh, you wanna make that as a motion, Henry?
I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we need to set a date, I guess, September one, beginning September one, time to our every time.
If, if I could, I would recommend that you start it ninety days after the second notice ran.
Well, that's what, well, we'll.
Yeah, instead of send a day to day. You follow?
Make the motion to start there.
All right, I will make a motion that we, uh, implement a moratorium on rezoning request fees, uh, starting after the second notice, or thirty days, thirty days, or not, we, we would want thirty days.
After?
After the second newspaper notice.
Just so I'm clear at least, you're saying thirty days after the second notice runs, the ninety-day clock begins?
The ninety-day clock begins.
Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay.
All right.
Now, the motion again is, is that, uh, fees for zoning requests, rezoning requests, um, moratorium would be established thirty days after a second notice is run in the newspaper, that the citizens have, citizens and businesses have the opportunity to, uh, submit a zoning request change.
Got a motion like you want it up?
I think we probably need to see it written out, maybe do like that.
All right, once the period starts, let us define the end date so that we can come back and clearly define it. What was his ninety day, no, it could be ninety two.
Well, the ninety days is for the citizens to submit, okay?
Then after that, I would think, well, I was actually thinking about that a second ago, um, the ninety days is the application period. On the, on the eighty-eighth day, if I come in and fill out this form, it doesn't end in two days, the, the, the rezoning request see it through to its end, end decision, that would go beyond ninety days.
It, it would go, well, actually, that would be the deadline for the clock. If someone wanted to come in after the ninety days and says, well, I want to apply for rezoning, well, they'd have to pay the six hundred dollars unless they wanted to wait and see if the rezoning covered them.
Right.
So the ninety days is just a moratorium for, for that ninety days.
Is the application.
For the application.
Agreed.
Anything after that, they would have, people would go back, but those properties that are under consideration, if it takes us another thirty days, then, then they're covered.
Sure. So what I was saying, if a person makes application within the ninety-day period, they're within the moratorium for the fee.
Right.
Then each one of them will be.
But we're gonna have to see each one to its resolution, so that ninety days don't apply to it. Once they've made application, they've taken care of the issue.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, not in the mud, the waters any more than they already are, but after we run the first notice, if five people apply, they're not inside the ninety-day moratorium window, by the way, the motion was just made, so we might wanna consider that.
Okay.
Apologies, mud into water.
Why don't we do it this way?
At our September one meeting, our September meeting.
All right.
We define states.
Implement, we'll implement the zoning ordinance, rezoning, uh?
Moratorium.
All right, moratorium to become effective after it's been publicized in our local newspaper, or at least twice. Um, well, we still need a week, we need, we need a timeframe, because you're gonna need a timeframe.
Well, why don't you do ninety days from the time it's been, it's published the first time, that's the easiest way.
Ninety days from the time it's been publicized twice in the local newspaper.
Okay, that's sufficient.
I think you might wanna hear what Morgan's.
Not the mud in the water, it's more than it already is, but just for clarification, because it is gonna be a modification to our zoning ordinance, it will look, planning board for their recommendation, which will be sent up to you for the September fifth day meeting, and then we can run back.
All right, so we, we do need thirty days. Planning board needs thirty days.
Yes, sir, we need thirty days.
Okay, sorry.
Before you pass September fifth.
Well, let's, make the motion that we send this to the planning board for their recommendation and a decision be made on September first meeting, September sep, uh, middle, the night meeting.
That doesn't give them thirty days.
And I mean, um, I will unfortunately be out of town, I will be going to San Francisco for a week and a half, so I'll have something for you September third.
Okay, all right, make, make that motion then, Henry.
All right, let's try it again. Um, the zoning, rezoning request moratorium, uh, is to be implemented after two publications in our local newspaper, uh?
I think we just, the motion is that we turn this to, uh, refer this to the planning board for their, um, uh, is that right? For, for the planning boards, um, uh, of review and comments, uh, and then at that point, we'll make the, the time, the timeframe in the next meeting.
So moved.
Back it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. It'll be set to the planning board for the next meeting. All right, you got something else, Henry?
That's, that's all I've got.
Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is, uh, Barry, you wanna speak now? I know you wanted to add in there. I'll give you a few minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to, uh, come to your meeting, um, and resurrect and reflect a little bit about where we're at and, uh, what you have done, uh, as the Board of Supervisors and Commissioners for Gates County. On March twelfth, two thousand twelve, a very important meeting was conducted at the Gates County Board of Education Office. The evening, the evening had an enormous and significant mission. The meeting served to explain, illustrate, and educate the educational needs for the Gates County School District. Mr. Blanchard, my CFO, presented the preliminary budget projections for the twelve thirteen school year. I observed school board members explaining the history of Gates County School District's fund balance, revenue expenditures, and athletic revenues. Explanation of state, federal, and local funding protocol was provided by the school board. The Board of Supervisors' interest in the educational system in Gates County spurred several questions. Queries on standard deviation per people expenditure trend lines and athletic revenue trend lines with illustrations through bar graphs and line graphs indicated a genuine and sincere support for the school system. The Board of Supervisors inquired about the percentages and the dollar amounts provided by the jobs bill, reversion dollars, and operating expenses for the school year. Roundtable dialogue provided the opportunity to work together as a team of educators for the citizens of the future. Gates County schools will continue to be resourceful as we strive to provide a quality education to all children of Gates County. Quality is established with innovating teaching styles, manageable class sizes, and individualized attention afforded to those who demonstrate a need. The fact that our teachers, administrators, and staff make a difference is proven. In order to continue to provide our children with the best possible education and to reach the high caliber teaching levels and state recognition, the amount of state and local funding to support our staff and programs will need to be maintained for the twelve thirteen school level. The funding level the Board of Supervisors appropriated the Gates County schools was very appreciative and illustrated their support and commitment to education. From the desk of the superintendent and from the Gates County Board of Education, we create opportunities for our students to excel, be exposed to healthier and enriched choices, and be equipped with the skills to be successful beyond graduation. If the state would take notes from the Gates County Board of Supervisors and Mr. Toby Chapel, then maybe, just maybe, two hundred and five thousand students would not lose out and fall behind, six hundred jobs would not be lost, and national sequestration would not yield a cut of over four point five billion dollars, which impacts nearly nine million students and eighty thousand potential job losses. Just a note, a report by the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities highlights that the struggling economy impair, impairs state ability to fund services. States have already faced tough choices to close a combined five hundred and forty billion in budget shortfalls between two thousand nine and two thousand twelve. Moreover, according to the report, the two thousand seven recession caused the largest collapse in state revenue on record. As of the first quarter of two thousand twelve, state revenues remain five point five percent below pre-recession levels. Simultaneously, state education obligations grow with states expecting to educate five hundred and forty thousand more K through twelve students. I just want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, we appreciate you.
Yes, it is.
Working with you in this year has been very, very enlightening.
Thank you so much, I appreciate each and one.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next one on the agenda, Morgan, we moved you down, uh, you had, uh, some, uh, fee schedules that you were gonna bring to us, I think, is that right, or?
Yes, I have.
Right, okay. And then we need to talk about the rezoning waiver request, I think that what we acted on today will take care of these two issues, is that right?
Well, if you see, if you said you would, I would prefer, if you wouldn't mind, to at least if, uh, this Hedges, uh, Valentine answered with around whatever way the fees that he clearly took in care of, then I would pass that on to the board.
Are, are they prepared to start doing something now? I think it's, it's gonna be taken, in other words, within the next ninety days, you foresee them needing the C1 classification?
I foresee this Hedges, uh, meeting within the next ninety days. Miss Valentine, I'm not really sure on what timeframe we're looking at. With the planning board met this month, we decided, maybe I should do that.
Yeah, yeah, maybe you should. One of the concerns I have, and, and really with, I think with, uh, Ms. Hedges, it's more of a, a, a issue from not being zoned right to start with. Ms. Valentine concerns me that, you know, a rezoning may not be approved, but with the new, uh, if this new, uh, plan goes through, then it would be available for her to put that mobile home there. I mean, I don't know what her timeframe is that she needs to move in.
That. Also, um, what the planning board did was, instead of just looking at one individual application, just the one application for Ms. Valentine, she brought up a very good point that we hadn't considered. The majority of that area is, and I've looked at the map myself, either double wides, single wides, or very rundown, single-family homes. And the planning board and I discussed, you know, we're kind of keeping it as a blighted area because we have such high standards. What if we were to rezone the entire area? So the planning board and I have been working on just rezoning the entire neighborhood, so instead of it being just one individual person, it's gonna be a cluster, so we're working on that.
Does the planning board make that call, bring it to the commissions, or is that a Board of Adjustment issue?
For the rezoning, we will consider it, we'll look at all of the parcels and all the data around, we'll make a recommendation and bump it up to you all for your final recommendation.
And what's her timeframe on this, uh, I know people, sometimes it, it needs to get done, I just, I don't know what we're dealing with.
Joe, Ms. Hoffler, didn't she say that, um, her son needed to relocate that double wide by November? I believe November is what she said. So I think within that ninety days, we could cover her.
So basically, if we, if we, if we, well, well, we need to, uh, if you're doing the whole neighborhood, is there a fee involved in rezoning the whole neighborhood? It just not, might not be an issue?
I think this is kind of a moot point now because we did the mor, we're discussing the moratorium in the ninety days, I will pass this information on to Ms. Hedges and Ms. Valentine, they can go ahead and put in their application, so I think this is kind of a moot point and there's nothing further to discuss. You've also got those fees from the neighboring counties, so you can see that where we are right now, we are in line. Um, Proquemen's is relatively cheap, I've been trying to contact Donna to find out why they are so cheap, but just to let you know, we're not completely out of whack.
Can we, uh, get these fees in a table format so that we got the fees on the left and then the columns that we have counties across the co, the top?
Yeah, a lot more user-friendly, wouldn't it?
Yeah, so I could, and even include like Hartford and Bertie and maybe Northampton.
Uh, I was wanting to try to get Bertie, but they do not have any zoning at all, so I would, and Northampton, I believe I did have there for you, but Bertie doesn't have zoning.
They might be smarter than we are.
They might be, but yeah, Bertie doesn't have any zoning, so I can, I'll have anything for you on that, but I can get you more counties if you'd like, okay?
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Morgan. All right, uh, next on the agenda, um, I reckon it's me, I've got a proclamation of support of the Wellness Committee, let me see if I can find everything. That's not it, is it? There it is, right there. Okay, we have, uh, I have a proclamation, uh, for support of the Wellness Committee that reads, whereas the Wellness Committee is to create a viable wellness action plan for Gates County employees, and whereas Gates County wishes to support the Wellness Committee by encouraging its members to adopt a mission statement which promotes Gates County's commitment to promoting a culture of wellness in the workplace, and whereas Gates County encourages employees to participate in all programs and training opportunities presented. Therefore, I Graham Twine, on behalf of Gates County, do hereby declare our support and commitment to the Wellness Committee as established. This would be adopted, uh, today, uh, first of August, two thousand twelve. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to, uh, approve this proclamation of support for the Wellness Committee?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. All right, now, we've got a couple of, uh, appointments we need to deal with. The first appointment is for the Gates Partners for Health Board. Kenny is currently serving on this board and his term is, uh, running out, uh, and I talked to Kenny and he would be willing to continue to serve on this board if the board so desires. Uh, do we have, uh, well, do we have, can we just make this as a motion to reappoint, just make a motion to reappoint Kenny? We have no other applicants for this board.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. One thing I have found in the last four years, if you volunteer for something, it's easy to get it passed. Well, the next thing on here, we need appointment to the County Community Advisory Committee. Uh, we've got a letter from, um, Ms. Mildred Hawkins, she has, uh, she says, the Gates County Board of Commissioners, I'm writing this letter to inform you that I am no longer able to fulfill my obligations as a Gates County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee member, therefore I'm requesting to be relieved of this position as of Wednesday, August first, two thousand twelve. Thank you for your, thank you for the experience, it has been great. Sincerely, Ms. Mildred P. Hawkins. Um, she is, uh, would like to be replaced on the board. We have a, a recommendation from the board, uh, for Ms., Mr. Arlen L. Hicks, uh, from Depot seven, Depot Road in Yore. Uh, in your packet, you have an application for appointment, and that seems to be the only one, um, to, uh, that has applied for this position. Uh, we need to open the floor for nominations for the position to this board, appointment to this board, do I have a motion to open the nominations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the floor is open for nominations for appointment to the, uh, let's see, this is, what board was this again? The community, uh, the Gates County Community Advisory Board. Uh, do I have a nomination to this board?
Uh, I'll nominate Arlen L. Hicks.
All right, are there any other nominations? If not?
I make a motion that may be closed, nomination.
All right, we have a motion to close the, the floor of nominations, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. All right, gentlemen, we have one nomination for the board appointment, Mr. Arlen L. Hicks. Do I have a motion if we accept his nomination and appoint him to the board?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. You'll notify him. I am. All right, uh, next on the agenda, I've got citizens' comments, I have one citizen would like to make her comment, uh, Ms. Howell, you still with us?
Yeah.
How are you doing today?
Thank you, I'm Ann Howell from your district. I was here at the last meeting and I spoke to you gentlemen about the, if there was any possibility of any change being made in the way the water bills are, we are out of town for the win- in the way the water bills are. We are out of town for the winter for approximately five and a half months. We pay the water bill and the trash bill, and I was told that I could, uh, turn the water off and pay twenty-five dollars reconnect fee, but I had to pay the trash bill. There's not a drop of water used, not a piece of trash carried, uh, to the trash dump. And I was just wondering if there had been any discussion among you gentlemen or anything being done.
Did you talk to me? I, I'm sorry, uh, nothing's been done yet, but I'll make sure to get something that's done this week.
Let me address that. And I, uh, got Renee to give me the last two-year billing. Uh, I've done this before when I was working on the payment process of trying to, uh, handle the window thing and that everybody showing up on the same day. And we got some of that resolved in a two-week, kind of a two-week deal. So this time, I asked her to give me all of those records, so I've got eighty-five thousand records. And, uh, that involves the amount paid, the usage, the location of the account, and I put that in, beginning to put that in a table format. And I didn't count all of the people that in that area, but as I said, there are a lot of people that fit that pro- well, they're not necessarily fit that profile, but if you look at January through June, you see zero, 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 zero. So I'm trying to count those and get some kind of analysis on the impact of that. And this also brings into the fact of what Mr. Luther said, and I think there's a lot of opportunity to add to do the, what he said, a big, big time. And I, I looked at that, sorted the commercial customers, the residential customers, uh, obvious, our biggest customer is the town of Gates. Um, but there are some others, but then after you come back and you take and, and analyze that, the number of customers that are paying, you know, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty dollars is enormous. So I mean, it, it's very easy, a workable plan, and this can be incorporated in that and seeing what the impact is on that and calculating the standard deviations that are between customers. And I'm working on that, and, uh, I hope that I'll have that done by September one of some analysis, and, and I'll be, you know, I'll share that with you.
Thank you.
When, when he brings it back to the board, then we can discuss making policy changes that may actually be able to help you with the, uh, the process.
Okay.
The policy would have to be changed before anything can be done.
You will not have another meeting in August?
No, ma'am. It'll be first of September.
So your next one will be September fifth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I, I think also, uh, we ought to ask the county manager, or ask the town, county manager to talk to the Water Department Supervisor Director and have him look at the feasibility of, of making that type change to the Water Department policy. That way, we'll have some input from him as well as the data that we have, uh, when we come back to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, next, uh, we have the Commissioner's comments. Kenny, you've got anything?
I'd like to thank everybody that came today and, uh, and the ones that have really stayed, uh, thank you. It's, uh, it's not re- easy sitting out there and hearing everything that's going on, but we, we really appreciate you coming.
And Jack?
Uh, I think we've had a very productive meeting and, uh, look forward to continuation of that. And look forward to the luncheon to follow.
John?
Uh, appreciate everyone coming, and obviously, it's important that you come and hear what your county government has to say, uh, and what's going on, and your input is vital. Uh, I've been working, as I just stated, about this water billing thing. I think there's some opportunities here that, uh, we can do that as a budget. There are some localities that do this, so, uh, I think it's very feasible and is a time-saving, uh, opportunity for us to have our OP, well, let me say, operational performance efficiency taking change so that we can get better at what we're doing. Another thing, uh, Cal just wrote an article this, if you see in the Gates County Index about the natural gas. Uh, just wanna clarify one, one thing. It's a sixty-two percent savings, not thirty-eight. It was just reversed. It, it's, the thirty-eight percent is, it would only cost them thirty-eight percent of what they already spent it, so I wanna make sure of that. But there's an opportunity there which it, uh, in the article though, from a Piedmont gas standpoint, is not beneficial because it just doesn't generate enough revenue stream, I don't think, to pay for the capital expense that's there. But there are some things, other things that can be done. I'm working on that, and it, that's a long shot, but it, it's a very possible thing. Another thing I've been thinking about, and I think this is extremely, uh, back in most private organizations or large organizations, trying to get a feel of what their, their organizational structure is and the attitudes and the, and efficiency and things that are driven through that process. There are a lot of behavioral firms like that that do this thing, psychological stuff, that they present a list of questions to all the employees. And from this, you have you driving line back up to you, you first level, second level, and right on up to the top guy where you have these questions, and it interacts, and it helps you as a manager to become more efficiency and, and understanding the character traits that you have and that you implement. And I think there's some, something to be gained from that from our county government, quite a bit to be gained from it. And, uh, that's something I'm looking at. It's not very, very expensive, but it's something that I want us to be thinking about and, uh, that we, uh, really survey our organizational structure and get a feel of where we are and improve our process as well as, uh, some other things that can be, uh, done there. I've seen this work. Uh, it helped me tremendously as a supervisor with the people that worked for me as well as those that were above me. And it was always good that I was able to go out there and evaluate those people that I was reporting to and how they interacted with me and how, uh, we got things done from a performance and efficiency standpoint. Uh, there are a lot of firms like that doing this that are very good at it, and they give you some very valuable information that is, uh, that you can use and help our, yourself grow as well as I think it would help our community grow. But again, appreciate all of you people being here, uh, appreciate your ideas, uh, any questions concerned. My name's in the phone book. There's only one in there. You call me, I will respond. Thank you.
Uh, Henry?
I too wanna thank everyone for coming and, uh, being a part of our meeting today. Uh, just have a few observations. Um, first of all, uh, Senator Stan White will be here in Gates County on, uh, August the sixteenth at the Murches Mill Pond Business Center, and, uh, he replaced, uh, Senator Mark last night when he retired. Uh, it's, he's running for reelection. It's always good to have our senators, uh, state senators who come to the county. I think we need to be familiar with them because many times there are, uh, issues in the General Assembly that affects us greatly, and when we have someone there that we have personal knowledge of and have talked with, many times we can, uh, uh, have them to vote in the way that Gates County would want, uh, would want that vote. So, uh, he'll be at the Murches Mill Pond on October sixteenth, and, uh, uh, Cal was, uh, so gracious to run that in the Gates County Index, so it is a notice in there today. Also, uh, Reverend Nathaniel Thomas is having a tent revival, uh, the week of August the, uh, seventh, I believe, and, uh, he's been very supportive. He invites the Commissioners on Thursday night, uh, we'll, yours truly will have a word. And so I, you join me if you will, and, uh, that's on, uh, August the ninth. Uh, the other issue is I'd like to address, and I do, uh, have concern and, and understanding from the citizens of this county. Uh, you know, many times when we vote on things, uh, the issues are a little controversial. Sometimes it may look like that we didn't take all things into consideration. But I, I would make you aware that, you know, on the issues that we voted on in, in the last meeting in regards to refinancing, Commissioner Horr has done a great job in bringing the, to the attention of the board the savings that's, uh, available in refinancing. Uh, the decisions that we made, uh, had to do with the fact that we considered what other projects we had and other things that we were planning to do uh, to try to keep from depleting our available funds to the point where it would limit us in what we could do. And that, that's the same theory we use at home where we say, well, we bring in X number of dollars, but we need a house, we need a car, uh, we need various other things, wanna send our children to school, so we, we don't pay for everything upfront. Uh, sometimes we use a little longer financing and we pay a little finance charge in order to do more things and have a better quality of life. Well, with the county government, that's kind of a, a similar issue. Uh, you know, we can spend, uh, to the point where we pay for things and we might save a little money, but then in other areas, we could go lacking. So there was some thought put into that, uh, not to take away from Commissioner Horr. He's done a great job. But I think that, uh, the other considerations were weighed, and, and, uh, the decision that was made, we felt that based on the advice of the county managers and so forth, that might have been the best decision. So I thank everyone for coming, uh, and just have a great day and a great week.
Thank you, Henry. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, all your comments, so, I'll listen to. A lot of people don't believe they are, but they are. There's one comment that was made today that I thought was kind of interesting, and it goes back to the library and the state of our economy and the things that happen in the government across the country. The statement was made that, uh, we want a library. Somebody give us one, or if it's grant money, or some, you know, if we don't have to pay for it, we, we're willing to have one. Uh, that's generally the, 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 the thought across the country of what we want, who want it, if we can get a grant to get it for free, if we don't have to pay for it. Uh, part of this, of trying to be in government and trying to do things in the county is we like to try to pay for things. So the process of building a library was to build us a library and to get it paid for in a minimum amount of time without expending a large amount of debt. Because we don't like, we don't, also, we also doing grants. We're doing other things in kind of with grants. Not everything was done with grants. Uh, not everything in your life is done with grants. They're done with loans, they're done with interest. It's just a part of being a good manager. Those of you who have been in business, or say you've been in business, know that companies borrow money and manage their debt on a regular basis. Counties have to do the same thing. Uh, if not, companies wouldn't even exist. Every company I've ever worked for had debt. They may not see it at the level that I was working, but I know the companies had to have debt to operate. They borrow money just to operate for a day sometimes. Farmers borrow money every year just to operate for a year. Debt is part of life, but we try to minimize our debt without having to go out and say, "We want this, but we want somebody to give it to us." That's the general consensus of the country today, is we'll take it if somebody will give it to us. Uh, I, I felt, I was real proud of the library, the fact that we could do it ourselves with our money at a minimum amount with a good tax interest, interest rate. But that was, that's part of the county, the part of the things at Sydney, and Tom pointed out about debt, and the fact that we go out and get grant money to do everything. We'll take it if somebody will give it to us, but we don't wanna go out and get it on our own. So, it's just a thought to keep in people's mind when, when things happen and you try to get something for the county, that we're not out there trying to get everything for free. Sometimes you have to pay for things you want. Uh, as a county, sometimes we have to pay for things we need, and that's part of our job is to try to help determine that. It's a hard, hard job sometimes to try to determine that fact. Do we, do we, do we go borrow money, or we just don't, don't get it? Do we need it? We've got to think twenty, thirty, forty years down the line. We can't think about tomorrow all the time. We've got to think several years down the line as a commissioner. If we thought about tomorrow every day, we probably can get nothing done. If the people from twenty-five, a hundred years ago thought about tomorrow, we probably wouldn't be here today. They thought about down the line, so we have to think the same way. But anyway, y'all, we welcome y'all here. We thank you for coming and putting up with us. Uh, have a good day, and, uh, y'all be safe leaving here today. Uh, we've got to go into closed session. Gentlemen, we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
We need to quote the.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Alright, if no other business needs to be discussed, we'll entertain, entertain a motion to, um, adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.